Indeed, thankful and grateful. Now, now, we have been in these, this body of teaching for the last few weeks entitled, I Hate This Church. And it is my prayer that so far that you have been blessed by this series, that it has challenged you and I be better Christians on this walk and along this Christian journey. Uh, this has been a very, uh, great, uh, subject, uh, because it's, it deals with our reality, uh, and where we are in our society right now. And so what we wanna do, we wanna be people who don't just hear the word, but we wanna be the people of God who will be towards of the word of God, amen? And when we become towards of the word of God, uh, life is just, uh, so much better. So, uh, to all our guests who are visiting with us for the very first time, again, you are indeed our honored guests. Welcome to the Northwest Church of Christ, a perfect place for, uh, imperfect people. And we're just thankful for tonight that you stopped by our way, uh, to hear, uh, what we're going to study on, on tonight. Again, we've been in this series called, I Hate This Church. And in this particular series, what we have been out of, we have been trying to show, and we have emphasized the importance of the Church of Christ. We have made emphasis that the Church of my Lord is extremely important in the eyesight of God. We have, we have went through scripture, we have shown clearly in the word of God, that when God looks at the church, the church is a piece of heaven on earth, that we are the ecclesia, that the church is not somewhere you go, but the church is what you become. So we've been in this series, we've been looking at this. And so what I wanna do tonight, I wanna add on to what we've already discussed. We have talked about reasons of why people hate the church. We get, we, we talked about that although we know the church is important to God, although we know that it was in his mind before the foundation of the world. The reality is that there are people in the world, even in the body of Christ, who dislike the church. And, and, and it's sometimes it's because of the picture that we have painted of the church to the world. And so what has happened is when you paint a, a picture of something to the world, uh, that is not, uh, equal to what the word of God says, people will hate what they don't understand. And so, and so what we wanna look at tonight, we wanna continue our study, because we've talked about these different isms. Remember what ism, I S M. Ism is a belief system, is a practice, it's something that you go up of, right? And so we talked about traditionalism, right? But you should know by now that there's nothing wrong with tradition, right? We're not knocking tradition, we're not saying that you can't keep tradition, that is not what we're saying. But what we're saying is, according to scripture, tradition should never be on the same level as the word of God. And not make it equal to the word of God. If you have a tradition in the church, great to have that tradition, but never make that tradition the point where it's equal to the word of God, because when you do that, you make the word of God of none effect, right? And so we've been talking, we talked about traditionalism. We also talked about legalism, right? Legalism is when you say what God has not said. Amen. Where you have spoken what God has not spoke. Legalism is when you have become a modern day heresy. Amen. That you put burden of laws and rules on people, and say, you gotta do all of this, amen, in order to be saved outside of the gospel of Jesus Christ. Legalism has become one of the things that has hurt the church. And there are many people who hate the church because of so many modern day heresy. You and I know both know people, when we have invited them to come to worship with us, they will say, no, I'm good, because in their mind, they have an idea of what the church is. Uh, there are many men who will not step into a church building because of an idea of what they, the church is. They think they're gonna be judged, that they're gonna be talked about, they think they're not gonna be, uh, be able to be, uh, be involved. What has happened is, what has happened, when that, when that happens, when that takes place, when you see that type of mindset, what happens, it's so, it's so interesting. People will hate the church as a result. And so we talked about legalism, but we also talked about perfectionism, right? Perfectionism is when you tell people, you gotta cross every, uh, T, dot every I, in order to obtain salvation. That, that you tell people that in order to, to keep your salvation, you have these lists of do's and don'ts that you gotta do, amen? We, we discovered by studying the word of God, not so. That God does not require perfection, but he does require progress. Say amen when you can. In other words, what he wants, he's not asking for spiritual perfection, he's asking for spiritual progress. Then you and I, as we grow our walk and our relationship with Jesus, that because of my walk and my relationship with God, my life is better as a result. And I don't have to cross every T and dot every I to be perfect in order to obtain my salvation. So we talked about when we paint a picture of the church, like we are people who don't do no wrong. Y'all know what I'm talking about. You paint the picture like you have never seen, and you never struggle, and you never have issue. What has happened is, you push people away from the church, they'll begin to hate the church, because they said, I can't be among them, because they can't identify with my struggles. Struggle, but here's the, the harsh reality. Harsh reality is, everybody on here has some struggles. But when we become so, when we become open for people, let people know, I'm not perfect. We let people know, yes, I still struggle in some areas, but I'm, but God is helping me. I'm being sanctified by the Holy Spirit of God. And because now the Holy Spirit is living, abiding in me each day I get up. But we talked about perfection, perfectionism, amen. Keeps people from the church and, and they began to hate the church. But this is what I wanna talk about tonight, another ism. I wanna talk about this particular ism, because this particular ism, everybody on this line has been guilty of. Mm-hmm. Tonight, I wanna talk about an ism that you're not struggling with it now. There was a time that you did struggle with. This particular ism keep people away from the Lord's church. This particular ism will keep people saying, no, I'm good, I don't wanna have anything to do with those people. This particular ism is contrary to what the picture we see, the New Testament church. This particular ism is what we call individualism. Somebody put that in the chat box in case somebody missed it. That this particular ism, the ism has caused men and women to hate the church because of your individualism. Somebody on here tonight, at practice right now, individualism, and you still say you name, say you are a Christian. Now folk get right here tonight, have said to themselves, I'm a child of God, I love God, uh, he's the head of my life, but you are an individual who practice individualism. Now, individualism, I need to define it, because I want you to know who individualism cousin is. Amen. Individualism cousin is selfishness. They first cousin. It's, it's because when you are, when you practice individualism, at the same time, you practice selfishness. Oh, it's gonna get hard right through in here. Tonight, what we need to talk about, that we need to understand, that when it comes to the church of the New Testament, the, the New Testament church did not practice individualism. I'll follow that. The New Testament church did not practice selfishness. Tonight, as we look in the word of God, I want us to examine our own hearts tonight. Tonight, I want us to ask ourselves, could it be that people don't see Jesus, because I'm in the way? Could it be that folk won't come to the Lord, 'cause I am a member of his church? I'm a part of the ecclesia, I'm painting a bad picture of Jesus. Could it be tonight, that, that the reason you can't save your spouse, save your family member, save your friend, 'cause when they see you, they see selfishness. Because when you fall in love with Jesus, you will kill individualism. You will kill selfishness when you fall in love with Jesus. Now, uh, to be fair, let me, let me, let me define these two words, also we'll know what we're talking about tonight. When, when we talk about individualism, individualism is more focused on dependency, rather than church dependence. Y'all got that? Individualism focuses more on independence, rather than independent. Y'all follow that? We're gonna get it tonight, when we talk about individualism, is when you or I focus more on dependency, rather than interpendency. In other words, what is individualism? It is when you have a mentality, it's all about me. When you have mentality, it's, it's about me, it's me, myself, uh-huh, and I. You're so focused on doing you and having a personal relationship with Jesus, without commingling with the people. Oui. It's when you buy into the concept that all you need is just Jesus. It's, uh, there was a song written a long time ago, it says, as long as I got King Jesus, I don't, I don't need nobody else, that's a lie. Oh, yeah, 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 stop singing that song, because you and Jesus. Jesus made it possible, that he died on a cross, shed a blood for a church. He never meant for it just to be you and him. That God made it so possible, that he wants us to depend on each other. Oui. Reason some of us, it's a hard word for somebody, because you don't like depending on other people. It, it's a hard word for somebody, because you're so hateful, and your ego has the best of you. You, you can be struggling, you can be in need, not say a word, because you're so strong, you're individual. You think you're beneath yourself, you have low self-esteem, where you, you're gonna be looked down upon, because you need a helping hand. I want you to know, a child of God, the wineos can drink from the same bar. They don't know Jesus. The people of God, people who say they love the Lord, people who say they are followers of the Lord, that we gotta portray a, a picture for the world, Jesus. It's the thing, here's the struggle tonight. Struggle tonight, how can we say that we serve a selfless Jesus, but his followers are selfish? I just got a question tonight. Question tonight, if you say you love Jesus, you serve a selfless Jesus, how can a follower of the Lord serve a selfless Jesus and you yourself being selfish? Selfishness, what is the selfishness? The definition of selfishness is devoted to or caring only for oneself, concerned primarily with one's own interests, benefits, and welfare, regardless of other folk. Let me say it one more time. Selfishness is when you devote to or caring only for oneself, concerned primarily with one's own interest, benefits, welfare, regardless of others. In other words, I told you, individualism and selfishness, it first cousins. There are a whole lot of believers, say they named the name of Christ, they are followers of Yahweh, yet they selfish. You only think about you. It's all about what you want, and what you get out of it. There are some people who only listen for a sermon, see what they can get out of, for them. Not for their family, not for their children, it's them. Uh, there, there are people, say they are followers of the Lord, they practice selfishness, but they don't realize they got a selfless Jesus. And that, that in the word of God, what God wants us to understand, what God wants us to realize, he never meant his people to practice individualism. Because when folk in the world see individualism, they see people who is contrary to what the New Testament. I'd say a selfless Jesus. If my Jesus selfless, how can I be selfish? Now watch this, I wanna show you something. Go to 1 Corinthians, chapter 12, 1 Corinthians, chapter 12, and verse number 27. I read this from the English version, uh, 1 Corinthians, chapter 12, verse 27. I love what it says, because after Paul is writing to the church in Corinth. Corinth had issues. You go back to the first chapter, you will see church, the church of Corinth had a lot of issues. That in the church of Corinth, was a lot of cornality in place. There was a lot of folk who was walking in their own flesh, and after their own desires. And it was interesting that they was arguing or debating about spiritual gifts. People had different gifts in the body. While they had different gifts, instead of them complimenting each other in the gift, was competing against one another. It was better than other people because of a certain gift. And so Paul in 1 Corinthians, chapter 12, he goes on the show, and tried to teach us that the eye cannot say to the body, that the, the foot is not of the body. Foot can't say to the hand, it's not of the body, just because it's of. In other words, he wants us to understand primarily, we are the body of Christ. I need us to understand, body of Christ is very important. The metaphor, the church is so important, because he wants us to see the ecclesia, the body. Now, I want you to think about your own body. Your body has many members. There are different members of those body parts, they have different roles, amen? And those body parts are not individuals themselves, separate and aside from the body. Oh, I need to linger there awhile. At 1 Corinthians, chapter 12, verse number 27, he says, now you are the body of Christ, and individually, members of it. So it doesn't take away your, your being a person, but you are connected to a body. Oh Lord, help me preach. That in other words, I know you're a Christian, amen? I know you're a child of God, but God never meant for you to do life by yourself. He saw that little old me and little old you be a part of a body. I need to tell somebody tonight, somebody on here tonight, don't think you important, don't think you are, don't think you got purpose. I want you to know tonight, that, because a lie, that I need you to know tonight, that you are extremely important to God. And when God puts you in the body, he puts you in the body for a particular reason. Now understand this, understand, everybody part, everybody part is important. You hear what I just said? Everybody part is important. The problem becomes, when you don't function, you're not a functioning body part. Oui. In other words, if you are part of body of Christ, that means that you ought to be a functioning body part. Can I talk to Northwest tonight? If you are a member of the Northwest Church, you ought not just be a pure member. And if you are just a pure member, we ought to be moving you and equipping you of being a pure member. And again, preacher. In other words, it does not matter where you from, what your ethnicity is, it doesn't matter what, how much money you got, amen? You could be from the poor house or from the rich house. You need to understand, God is looking for you to be a functioning body part. That's why he says, ye are the body of Christ. I want you to see us the body. In other words, your foot side ain't gonna work today, it's gonna affect the body. If your hand side ain't gonna work today, it's gonna affect the body. Lord have mercy. Members of the body that you can't even see, and if it's functioning properly, it ought to affect the body. Here's a word tonight, this is a word for somebody tonight. Word for tonight is, that if you are in relationship with God and his body, and when you are, when you are a functioning body part, where you're no longer functioning, the body ought to feel it. Oh, let me say, I'm gonna let that linger awhile, let me let you put that in your spirit. If you are a functioning body, uh, a, a part of the body of Christ, you're functioning. And when you're no longer functioning, then we ought to feel the, the, the revenue or of you're not functioning. What you're saying, preacher, I can't get it, okay? I didn't get it the first time, let me say it again. That, that if you are a member of the body, you ought to be a functioning body part of the body. If you are part of the body, and you go missing, or something happened, you're sick, you pass away, the body doesn't feel it. It's a problem. Oh, see, this is not just goals for the body, but any relationship. It can be a, 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 a relationship, a marriage, it could be a, uh, in a, in a, in a company, but we're in our content, we're talking about the body. Here's the, I tell y'all the harsh truth tonight. Can I say a harsh truth, and y'all don't be mad at me? If your absence doesn't bother the body, your presence never matter. Oui. If you're in a relationship, absence of, of them not being there, doesn't bother them. The pre, their present never matter. Oh preacher, what you saying? I'm saying tonight, that we ought to be so functioning in the body of Christ, we're not just practicing, we're not practicing individualism. We are so connected to each other. When somebody is a, in the body, everybody should feel it. That, that when somebody has a promotion, and somebody has some good news, we all be able to celebrate it, because we are connected to one another. Y'all follow that tonight? So what I, what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to go here, one of us is that something. We are members of the body of Christ, and members in particular. Now, let me show you, let me show you three things tonight, and I'll be done. And if we're not, if we're going to not practice individualism, we're, if we're not gonna be selfish, number one, watch this, wait for it. You gotta put other needs before your needs. Mm-hmm. Any and child of God, you're not going to practice selfishness or individualism. You and I, we gotta put other folks' needs before our own needs. Oh preacher, that hurt, that hurt. In other words, I'm gonna be like a selfless Jesus. I'm gonna be a follower of the Lord. I gotta learn, I gotta, in practice, to put other folks' needs before my needs. Watch what the text says. 1 Corinthians, chapter 10, and verse number 24. I want you to watch what the Bible says. The Bible says, let no one seek only his own good. I'm reading from Amplified. But also, that of the other person. Hmm. Let no one seek only his own good, but also that of the other person. In other words, in other words, it's not saying neglect self, that's not what I'm saying tonight. What I'm saying is, I'm talking to the selfish person. The person that you always just thinking about what you can get out of it. You always thinking about what you need. When, when we, when we're doing prayer requests, you only think, you only want us to pray for you. There are some people, we can pray for each other tonight, some of us won't pray their prayer no more until next week. Selfishness, amen? Some of us can't remember prayers that was prayed last week, because you was only thinking about your prayer that you asked for. Selfishness is an individualism. You don't even check, see how the person is doing with the prayer that you said you prayed for. In other words, he says, you need to seek the good of other folk. Need to be able to say, I wanna know what's going on with them. Follow me tonight, watch this, 1 John, chapter 3, 1 John, chapter 3. And, uh, beginning with verse number 17, 1 John 3:17, I read from the New Living Translation. I want you to watch what the Bible says. 1 John, chapter 3, verse number 17, watch what it says. Someone has enough money to live well, and sees a brother or sister in need, shows no compassion. How can God's love in that person? Oh, that's a word for somebody tonight. In other words, God says, that if you have enough money to live well. I ain't talking about, I ain't talking about leeches now, I'm talking about man who's really in need. I got that in my sermon tonight, I can't talk about leeches, I ain't talking about them. I'm talking about people who are in need, you see them in need, and the only thing you gonna say, that I'm gonna pray for you, to was the help to the prayer. Sold the need, because of your own selfishness, kept it to yourself. Oh my God. See, see, tonight, what I want us to see, what I want us to understand, what I want us to recognize, he says, listen, I need you to practice being selfless. Sometimes putting other needs before yours, sometimes helping somebody financially. You may not give a, asking for a hundred dollars, you may not can help him with a hundred, you can put a twenty in their hand, you not miss it. Uh, y'all ain't saying nothing. Selfishness, selflessness is when you see somebody, and, and, and they down, and you give them a compliment. You encourage them along the way. Hmm. Selfishness, selfishness is when you can text somebody throughout the day, say, how can I pray for you today? I've been thinking about you, I wanna know, how can I pray for you? I'm, I don't want, I don't want anything, I don't need anything, just crossing my mind. I wanna know, what is, what's your need today that I can pray for? That's, that's when you put o, 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 other needs for yours. It's when you know you're growing, when you got a need, you still trying to help somebody else with their need. It is when you yourself need a prayer, you still petition prayer for somebody else behalf. It's when you put needs of others before yours. Oh, I know it's a hard word tonight, watch this, Acts, chapter 2. Acts, chapter 2, verse number 57. I wanna read from the Amplified verse, I love how I read. Acts 2, verses 44 through 47, I want you to watch what the Bible says. The Bible says, and all those who had believed in Jesus as Savior, were together, watch this, and had all things in common, considering their possessions belonged to the group as a whole. Wait a minute, these folk are from the Roman Empire. Now, they have been baptized into Jesus Christ, can't go back to their homeland, and they all together, what they're doing is, considering their possessions belonged to the whole group, are so separate. Watch this, they begin selling their property. Hmm. And possession, and were sharing the seeds with all believers. As anyone had need, do you not know what they did? This is, you, this is what you see, they had their first fundraiser. Oh my God. This, I just, this is a nugget for those who was taught traditionally, that the church can't have a fundraiser. That's a tradition, but here in Acts 2, you find the first fundraiser. Because what they did was, they took possession, sold their possessions, sold for the fact, everybody in the community, everybody that was a part of the ecclesia, that they wouldn't go without. You see, I see it. Hey, watch what it say. It says, day after day, they met in the temple area, and anyone with one mind, breaking and anyone with one mind, breaking bread in various private homes. They were eating their meals, gathered with joy, generous heart, praising God continually, and having faith with all the people the Lord kept adding to their number daily." Those who was insane, y'all see the mentality? They fell in love with Jesus to the point. Where they got together, they said, "You are part of this glasia, you won't ever have a need." One of the, one of the visions of the Northwest Church, that we create our, our own economy within the body. Hmm. Is, it is when, is when we are so in tune. Now we can provide services not just for our community. We can able to employ the very people inside of our community. Oh, y'all ain't saying nothing. It is when we'll be able to ministry, twenty-four seven, somebody preach, I ain't never heard nothing like that. That's why it's called a vision. It is when, is when you take the economy, you take what we have, and you begin to say, "Oh, we gonna serve our community." We got too many resources among us, we got, we got teachers, and we got folk with doctor degrees, we got folk who do handywork. We got too many resources not to be able to build our own economy. And he says in this text, he says, "They were sold together." When other folks saw that, watch the picture. They say, "Wow." These folk got it together like that, and the Bible says, "Lord added to the church daily." And here's the thing, he saw them doing ministry on a different level. Folk of different backgrounds who didn't know each other. Folk had different walks of life. Folk, amen, who didn't grow up in the same house. They came together, and because they shared Jesus, they shared their resources. Somebody oughta put in the chat box, "If I can share Jesus, I can share my resources." Because when you fall in love with Jesus, you fall in love with the people who in Jesus. And so here in the text, he says, "What we're gonna do," he says, "We gonna make sure that everybody will have what they need." Wouldn't it be wonderful? And if church, modern day church would be just like the church Acts two. Wouldn't it be wonderful? We ain't gotta worry about COVID affecting our children, the school system. Because we'll have our own school, we can do it how we wanna do it, our children still can be blessed. Wouldn't it be wonderful, she ain't gotta worry about, amen, whether or not they gonna do right by you on the job? Because the very thing you do for the job, you can do for Jesus and the community. And ain't nothing better like being able to get paid to do what you love to do anyway. My God. And here he says, this is the picture that we see in the New Testament. I don't see it, amen, we got a, we have a, we have a very, uh, sometimes low understanding. We sometimes put God in the box, but I still believe the birth of my Lord can be just like this. But you know why? We so selfish, we scared to put our resources together. Because somebody think they gonna get the short end of the stick. That's the truth. So, so, you got all these resources, all these gifts, and you telling me we can't have our own economy? You telling me we got a building, a twenty-four thousand square building. It can't be a hall for the community that we can do ministry out of, just not just doing two days a week. It could be something done seven days a week. You telling me with all these resources, all these brilliant minds, all these people with all these degrees, and you telling me, "We share Jesus, we can't share resources?" He says, "I want you to know, you gotta put other needs before yours." I love it, I love it. Because here's the thing. People oftentimes get a job, "I wanna start this business." Starting the business, but you starting it, why you start it? Because I wanna have more money. That's great, what else you gonna do with it? I'm just, I just wanna get more money so I can retire. That ain't what God planned. That's why he blessed you with the resources. You ain't got him in the plan. Told you a long time ago, a prayer, a, a, to pray, if you pray to pray, I promise you, God gonna give it, gonna do it. Your prayer is, "Lord, Lord, give me more money because I wanna be the biggest giver." A double dog, hey you to make your prayer. If your prayer tonight is, "God, I wanna be the biggest giver at the Northwest Church." Because here's the flip side, if I'm the biggest giver, that means God must be putting something in my pot. But the reason many of us ain't scared to pray their prayer, because you don't wanna be the biggest giver, because instead of putting in God's, you wanna put in your own house. And here is the text, says, watch this, he says, "You gotta learn to put others before you." Watch this. I'm on the first point, I ain't gonna get done tonight, y'all. I ain't gonna act like I'm gonna get done. We gonna go, we gonna go this last scripture, and I'm gonna be, uh, I got two more points, but I can't get to it tonight. Watch this, Proverbs chapter one. Yeah, chapter one, I got chapter one. I got chapter one. I want you to, I want you to see, I'm trying, what I'm trying to brand on this, I'm trying to get us as God's people. We can do this Northwest. Northwest, we can do it. Matter of fact, we in the process of doing it. We gonna do, we gonna create our own economy. It don't make sense. The government dictate kingdom, the kingdom matter. It, it don't make sense. Kingdom stuff that we do, we're doing kingdom work. And that government, the kingdom work. And so now you so tired, you can't do kingdom stuff. And now Jesus has become secondary and not primary. I want you to watch this, yeah, chapter one. Then we're verse number two, watch what it says. This is what the Lord heavens armor says. "The people are saying, 'The time has not come to rebuild the house of the Lord.'" And I need you to know, that we, we talked about the couple in the beginning of the series, that God had destroyed the temple. Allowed it to be destroyed, right? Allowed it to be destroyed. God said, "It's now time to rebuild the temple." They says, "The time has not come to yet rebuild the temple." Watch this. The Lord sent this message through the prophet Haggai, because God is speaking through the man of God. Watch what he said. "Why are you living luxurious house while my house lies in ruin?" Why, they were so selfish. Now watch what they did. They said, "God says it's time to build my house." Prophet says it's time to build God's house. They say, "Ain't time to build it." Why? And the prophet says, "If it ain't time to build God's house, why your house so lux- luxury? While his house lies in ruin." Oui. See, tonight, what I'm trying to get us to see is the mentality of who we serve. We gotta put others first, we gotta put God first. Amen. Watch what he said. He says, "Uh, this is what the Lord of heaven armor said, look at what's happening to you." Says, "I want you to know, if you wanna know what's happening to you, let me tell you. You have planning much for harvest little." Oh my God. Have you ever worked your fingers to the bone? You got two jobs and still ain't got nothing to show for it? You work real hard, you say, "I work hard," but I don't see, they said, "You make sixty thousand dollars a year." Well, I don't see no sixty thousand. He says, "You work hard, you get very little." Watch this. He says, "You eat, you ain't satisfied." God says, "I'm listening that you eating, but your belly still hungry." He says, "You drink, but you're still thirsty, no matter how much you did, no matter how much you still want." Because of your mentality, you're selfish. Watch this. He says, "You are clothed, from clothes, cannot keep warm. Your wages disappear as though you were in them in pocket, you would hold." Oh my God. All right, what's the left? He says, "I'm trying to teach you not to be self, selfish." I'm gonna teach you, get away from individualism. Because you actually think that you can dishonor God, move up with the peace of God and God's plea. Are those the night ministries that you were part of before the pandemic? Some of us ain't a part of, because you going through something. When you going through something, the first thing you give up is spiritual stuff. You didn't give up your responsibilities on your job, you didn't give up curriculum committees. The first thing you give up when you go through something is spiritual stuff? You don't wanna teach Bible class no more, because you going through something. That's the name of Jesus. You don't wanna serve on a committee, because you, he says, "What I'm gonna do, I'm gonna let you go ahead. I'm gonna let you play real hard, I'm gonna let you go, I'm gonna let you do the eight, five. I'm gonna let you do the double. I'm gonna let you get all that money that you, you want, but what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna put holes in your pocket. But when you put the money in your pocket, you gonna say where it go, and God says, "I put holes in." I blew it away. Because what I'm trying to get you to understand, you can't be, you can't serve a selfless Jesus in detail. Watch what he says. "This is what the Lord of the heavens armor says, 'Look at what's happened to you. Now go up into the hills, bring down the timber, rebuild my house.'" Says, "This is what I want you to do. I want you to get back to kingdom work. You worried about you, but I want you to get back to kingdom work." Now I'm here to tell you tonight, I know in a pandemic, why you doing kingdom work? Who have you prayed for, or are you self? Who have you reached out to? You just thinking about you. Man, somebody gets sick, you don't even call, because you just thinking about you. Somebody loved one guy, they in the body, you don't even pick up the phone and say, "I'm praying for you." What's wrong with you? It's selfishness. It's the sin of being individualism, it's individualism. Listen, listen, listen. Watch what he says. Says, "Then I will," he says, "When you do king of the building," he says, "Then I will take pleasure in it to be honored." He says, "When you stop thinking about yourself, only start thinking about others and the kingdom." What I want, says, "I'll take pleasure in it, I'll be honored at the Lord." "You hope rich harvest, they will fall. When you broke your harvest home, I blew it away." Why? "'Cause my house lies in ruin," says the Lord of, of heaven's armor. Where all of you are busy building your own fine house. You so busy doing your own thing. You so busy working out the business plan, you ain't thinking about Jesus. Oh yeah, you try to, "I think about Jesus?" Yes, only when it's convenient for you. You think about it when, you think about it when it's convenient to you, you ain't picked up your Bible since son. You ain't read a scripture, amen, since last week. Sunday, you sitting at the house, you ain't comfortable yet to come to the building, amen, you sitting at the house, you still wait to five o'clock PM to, to listen to it. Why? It's individual. You're selfish. God tonight says, "Why would somebody tell somebody about Jesus? How wonderful he is, and they see your selfishness, what if he that good, why you ain't doing no better? If he's so wonderful, why you ain't doing the things of the kingdom? We gotta stop using God on our own terms." Watch what he said. Says, "It's because that the heavens would hold the do, the earth do's no pro." The reason you ain't being blessed, you could be, because you were holding out on God. You not even thinking about his kingdom, you not thinking about how to, to be a participant of the body. He says, "I'm gonna withhold." He says, "I have called for a drought on your fields." It's a bad thing when God says, "I caused a drought." You can't blame it on your enemies, you can't blame it on the devil. God says, "What do you do when God calls the drought? Who do you pray to? Who you do, who do you talk to? Who do you talk to about God? God is the one who calls the drought." God says, "I caused the drought, drought, roll of the grain, grapes, olive trees all over across, a drought starved you and your livestock to ruin everything you have worked so hard." Y'all see this? This is the same God, you say he's good, he's still a good God. This is the same God that you say, "God, he's a merciful, he's a saint," but God says, "I gotta teach my people that I am a God who wanna be worshiped, served correctly." You can't serve me on your own terms. You can't serve me how you wanna serve me, and how, how, how you see. You can't, can't make me up in your own head and serve a Jesus, because there's a Jesus in your head that does not match the Jesus of the Bible. No, says, "I'm the one that causing the drought." Could it be tonight? Some prayer that you asking God to deliver you from? God says, "I ain't gonna deliver you from me." Could it be tonight that you praying to God to deliver you from a drought? God says, "How you, how I'm gonna deliver you from the drought, and I caused the drought?" Because you ain't learning none from it. Ain't learning none from the drought, but you want me to stop something, and I'm trying to get your attention. Everything else got your attention, but let me give the drought. Let me cause the drought, let me call, because I'm trying to teach you how to put other folk needs before yours. I'm trying to teach you what it means to be in the kingdom. Does that make sense tonight? I'm not trying to teach you, I'm trying to cultivate you, I'm trying to shape and mold you to what I need you to be. Because tonight, we got a problem, we got a selfishness problem. Individualism, it calls folks to hate the church. I challenge you, tomorrow, pick somebody in our, in our, our body, among our local, that you haven't hit. Oh, somebody you don't normally talk, so let me pray for. Somebody, how can you be in assistance and them? You know they going through it. If you know you going through it, and you got a few extra dollar, cash at the brother twenty dollars. Say, "I'm just thinking about." Y'all ain't saying nothing tonight. Call somebody and say, "Listen, you need me to pick some groceries up for you?" It's, it's, it's that. When people see that, they say, "Wow." These folk, these folk for real, they love Jesus. Northwest Church, we are not after being a monument. We're not after being a museum that people just can look at, and it's look good on Sunday, and it's like, no, 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 no. We are the real deal, baby. We are the ones who say what we are, we want to follow Jesus, we wanna look just like him. We ain't perfect. We gonna make some mistakes. We gonna hurt each other feelings every now and then. I, we scrape, we gonna go and eat bread together. And we gonna say, we end this thing together. We are God, I am your Christ. I am your Christ, so important. It's individual, not just individual, you're not just by yourself. You gotta let the pride to go, you gotta learn to, we gotta learn to lean on each other, we gotta learn to depend on each other. Why? Because that's why God said, "Fit." That's why he did what he did. You know, he know where you from, he know your background, he know what type of person you are. He put you in the body with somebody that's different than you. It's easy to get along with folk that y'all, y'all got the same everything together, y'all love the same stuff, y'all, it's like, no. But I said, "I'm gonna do a mixture, I'm gonna, I'm gonna mix something up." Because when folk, the world can see folk from different backgrounds, from different parts of the neighborhood, see that and say, "Wow, these folk, these folk have fallen in love with you." We began to pray a real Jesus for real world. And I'm afraid tonight, a lot of what we see in our churches is artificial. I'm afraid tonight. The author, shout, and they scream, and they say, "Amen." Walk, close the prayer, they walk in the parking lot, they go back to their own selfish ways. Then they, and then they press the button, and play repeat. Start all over again. Now we gonna kill that spirit. No, 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 no. We are gonna be, we're gonna set a structure, we're gonna have an atmosphere as a church. They were gonna say, "No, individualism has no part here. I depend on you, you depend on me. We need each other." And that's what makes us the body of Christ, that was make us different. Now I'm saying, now we ain't perfect, but man, we making a progress. Northwest Church of Christ is not the same church it was in year two. It's not the same church it was in year five. It ain't the same church it was in year seven. Every year, we ought to get better. Next year, we not gonna be the same church we was this year. Why? Because what happened, I continue to add to the body. Bring, we're baptizing people, bringing people in the body, who have, who from different backgrounds, have different walks of life, have their own setting experiences. God knows that, and God says, "I'm gonna put them in this body." Because they, I need to do this, this body. What we ain't doing five years ago, because we didn't have that person. See, five years ago, we was what we need to be, but when God added to the number, God says, "I got some new people in the body." God says, I got some new people in the body, can do something different. And just because you led that ministry five years ago, you may not be the same person that greeted the next five years, because there's somebody else who's more within the area than you. It don't take away from your goodness. Because remember, it ain't about you in the first place. That's the name of it. It's about the identifying of the body. So now, we, we gonna continue this on what next way is, because I, I gotta finish this individualism. But I wanna, I just wanna, I wanna, I wanted to help us tonight, that our prayer tonight, that I pray this sincerely, as we close, my prayer tonight, that when we close, you have a personal talk with God. And you tell God, God, I need you to help me with me. One of, one of the things, one of, one of the greatest things that happened to me when I was on my sabbatical, is my long time with God. I used to have this prayer, and y'all heard, some of y'all have heard me say this before, some of y'all haven't, but my prayer used to be more of God, less of me. It used to be my prayer. I used to say, I just say that boldly. I heard all the folks say that, I want more of God, less than me. And in my sabbatical, in moments where I was by myself, I came with God. I said, no, you just saying the wrong prayer. It shouldn't be more of God and less of you. It should be more of God and none of you. That's your prayer. Your prayer tonight should be more of God, none of me. Because when you say more of God and less of you, that means there's still a part of you you wanna hold on to. No, 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 no. I said, no, 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 afraid to hear. More of God, none of you. Because I wanna lead you. I want to direct you. I want you to be selfless. So we can heal individualism. That's all I have tonight. I pray something was said tonight that will bless you, uh, in your walk with God. And you'll be a better Christian tonight because of the word that was, was taught tonight. Uh, do I have any questions tonight, uh, that I need to address before we close? Any questions tonight? Any questions? No questions? Yeah, I have one. What's the question? Hold on, let me see, can I find it? Because I'm having trouble. If you read it, I laugh up, because I'm having trouble with this.
When are you going to do another questionnaire to see what ministry someone can be work, someone can be a part of, to try and be a working body part?
Uh, I think I'm talking about the spiritual, uh, gift analysis. What I would encourage, I don't know who asked that. Uh, but what I would encourage first and foremost is to follow, uh, our system in place with, with our First Start Ministry. That's one of the purposes of our First Start Ministry, is to try to help, uh, members, um, to find out where they fit in the body of Christ. Now here's the interesting thing. Um, when you talk about, when you talk about, um, I'm sorry, I thought I got a question. But when you talk about, um, uh, the body of Christ, and you talk about, uh, giftedness, when you, we talk about the gift, the gift that God has for you, you have a gift. Everybody always has a gift. And because of the gift that God has for you, the gift that God has for you, the gift that I wanna use, it needs to be equipped. The wife, he's in four eleven, talks about how we are equipped for the body. And so I'm encouraging, uh, whoever asks that question, that when Fresh Start One-on-One comes back around, look out for it come to. Because you need to be introduced. Northwest is not like all churches of Christ. And what I mean by that, that's not, that's not, not any churches of Christ. But we're very intentional about what we're trying to do. We're very intentional about every member operating in their gift, uh, properly. And sometimes, uh, I, right now, I have, I have, we baptized somebody right now, who, who already, who wanna operate as a level five. And who says, I see a need for a particular ministry, and we're working on it now. Because he's gifted in that, and we're working on a ministry for twenty-two. And just because we don't have the ministry in Northwest, if you are gifted enough, and you are committed enough, to be committed to the work, lead it, we'll let you lead it. Right? Uh, and to lead us in. So that's what God is doing. But we gotta discover what the gift is. Uh, and whatever that gift is, uh, we'll be able to use it. Uh, somebody asks, how do you know what your gift is? And again, that's a good question. Um, the thing, I, I, I try to, I say this often, you know is your gift. When, when other people have confirmed it's your gift, when people have confirmed it's your gift, they say, this is my gift. They say, man, you, you blessed, confirmed, and it edifies. But when other folks have confirmed it, edify other folk, other folk, it's your gift. It's your gift. But your minister, uh, is supposed to equip you to do work. Ephesians four eleven is, I love Ephesians chapter four, because God says, I give gifts to men. The man of God, the holders of the church, are gifts to the church. And because they are gifts to the church, God says, they are responsible for equipping you to do the work of men. That's why, that's why it's so unbucal for members not to be a, be a member of, of, of a local body. It's so unbiblical. And, and that's independent to individualism. That's people who wanna, is outside, they don't wanna covering, don't want nobody to lead them. That is, that is, that is simple. I never meant that to be the case. When somebody tell me they don't have a church home, I'm, you are homeless spiritually. You do not have a cover. You're homeless. And so that's why it's so important that you go to a, be a member of a congregation, where you'll be able to be covered and equipped to do ministry. That's very important. I'm trying to get these questions, they keep coming. Uh.
You see it?
Well, uh, ask the other question.
How do you know if you are setting boundaries or being selfish when it comes to helping others?
Okay, so, here's the thing about boundaries. You must set boundary with, with individuals, people. If you're not careful, the wrong people, um, will kill you. You will, by helping, they're gonna kill you. Uh, all the times should be this thing where it should not be more deposit, withdrawals than there are deposits. In other words, because if you keep withdrawing from me, withdrawing from me, eventually I'm gonna be bankrupt spiritually. And when I'm bankrupt spiritually, uh, what happens? I have no more to give. So I gotta create a boundary. Say, this is how, this is what I can do, this is what I can't do. That's why I use the illustration, uh, of you asking for a hundred dollars. I don't have, I can't give you a hundred, but I can give you twenty. Boundary. I can, this is what I ended. So you gotta be mindful of the individual, you gotta look at the history, the check, check record. You don't wanna enable individuals either. I don't enable individuals. But you wanna be able to be a help when, where you can be a help. And all the time say that you will not let people drain you to the point where it takes away from you and kills you. Uh, and, and I'm, I'm big on that. I told somebody today that everybody can have my gift, but not everybody can have me. And I was, I went to another preacher, because he's, he's struggling with some things, and I made, and he asked me for some advice. And I told him, he gotta learn how to set boundaries, that you gotta learn how to give people your gift, and not give people you. Give everybody you, because some people would deplore you and walk away and feel none, none wrong with it. So you gotta learn how to do that. I hope that, uh, answered that question. Any, was there any other questions, sister?
Thank you, Jesse.
Uh, I saw, I, I don't think this is a part of our discussion, but I thought a question. Uh, somebody asked me, do I go by pastor? Uh, uh, I don't know how to respond to that. I will say that, um, I don't go by, I don't go by anything per se, brother, be your minister, uh, pastor, uh, any of those things. I think the question is, they asked the question, uh, you asking, is it, I don't, I, it ain't my lesson tonight, but I'm gonna say, ain't nothing wrong with calling a preacher pastor. But that's a different question, and I don't wanna get so detailed on that tonight, that it takes away from what we're talking about. Uh, but there's, biblically speaking, there's nothing wrong with calling a preacher pastor. In the verb, not the noun. I hope that clears that up. Uh, any, uh, other question? Any other question? Uh, I thought I'm making sure. If, if I miss your question, please say something, because I can't, I'm going, I'm trying to go through this. So if you, if you had a question and I did not answer it, please, 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 type it in again, or send it to sister Carter, so I can answer it quickly. And, uh, I wanna be able to answer, answer your question. Um, any, other question, I think I answered everybody. Is that all? Well, again, again, we're thankful tonight, we're grateful tonight, um, uh, that, that you, everybody was with us. I do want to encourage you, uh, tomorrow night, I will be facilitating, uh, our discussion with young adults tomorrow, from the ages eighteen to thirty-five, and ask all our young adults from ages eighteen to thirty-five, get on our, uh, this particular Zoom. We're gonna use this Zoom on tomorrow, uh, night, from ages eighteen to thirty-five, and we're gonna, I'm gonna facilitate, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna do what I did tonight. I'm gonna facilitate a dialogue with young adults eighteen, thirty-five, uh, seven thirty. We'll be on at seven thirty, not seven o'clock, seven thirty PM. And what we're gonna discuss for a few weeks is, did the devil really make me do it? And we're gonna talk about and facilitate the conversation of temptation. And what we wanna talk about, did the devil really make me do it? So if you have, uh, somebody who's a young adult, age eighteen to thirty-five, please send on to meet us here, same platform, at, uh, seven thirty PM. And we gonna really tackle that question and facilitate, did the devil really make me do it? Amen. Uh, any, any per request, any per request tonight?